Watch that happen.
Hey, anyone else in there?
Probably those.
I mean, I've been up.
No, no, it's probably from today.
Yeah.
That's not fair.
And you see the.
No, I'm just receiving rest and.
Yeah.
True.
It's been on.
So Ron has got a couple of plunkers on her. Is that doesn't.
I don't.
They're doing. So, yeah, but they need it to get the point. You know, with.
Pretty, pretty, yeah.
I got excited. I was like, well, look at that. First thing you know, was it a night? Was it not? This guy calls up. That's kind of what I wanted. I want reflective, so if you could see it. I let it be attached. But, yeah. So. I never know. Then I tried to clarify this language. When I think it actually does.
Well, we're gonna probably try to find this one for twenty dollar media challenge on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I paid a.
So.
I said, I have.
We too well, so.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll play it out later we go. Uh, deal with it there. See what. I can't.
I still.
I'll say.
Since we have other pictures up.
So, we turns out. Although you're not.
Anyways.
So.
Well, we have a.
We put in.
Even six forty.
Eight thirty.
That's it.
That means.
Sorry, I don't.
I just somebody who gets off their.
It's a little tricky.
That one guy is.
So he's.
That's why I made you the dances of people.
No.
The flash.
Why do they?
It's.
A sandwich.
We did all the by.
And so it's made his time.
So.
There.
There.
At the same time.
Like that.
Yeah.
Better turn my phone on.
I hope.
That rings during a meeting.
It's.
It's attached.
She got the.
The phone.
It.
Listen.
Then.
Something.
Yeah.
I mean, that's funny bar.
Yes.
That's really.
Yeah.
He's not like that.
It's.
Hey.
You say.
I'm just.
For.
Send your postman over.
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm far.
He's far.
She really much.
She make her.
See all the way back.
Off the system.
But so we understand it's the first time.
He's moving.
He's open.
Get right in.
It's everything.
Oh, just my.
But.
It's.
It's bad.
In.
That.
Do.
Will you?
So that.
So I said.
No, I still, I think I blew my ear probably.
So.
We seen.
So.
I'm going to show you.
They're on.
Can't hear out.
Yeah.
So.
Stop.
Jesus.
Please lost fluid.
Hard to. I'm.
But.
Don't touch.
Back to us.
So we're getting out of round over twice.
Exactly.
I would.
Well.
If you guys go without.
Back to it.
It's.
No, better than.
It's killing myself.
But the rest is.
Over and out from me twice.
And it's very first time I would.
Probably.
Yeah.
Don't.
There's that.
It's. That.
Yeah.
That's about that. They saw a game.
So.
Do you understand?
So.
All. Well.
Or just.
Sure. That same time.
That's.
Why? What's going on?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's.
Did you get another tattoo?
Hey.
This is squirrel. Let me see it.
English.
Okay.
So.
Uh. You're being out. Oh, my God.
Yes. That's great.
That is big.
Yeah.
Uh. My words.
It's.
My.
No.
He's.
I've. Yes.
So. So. Unfortunate. You know?
Are you?
Good? Let me see that again.
Okay.
You had a.
Possibly interesting something today.
Oh.
Not because of that question.
Well, have you?
They're like.
You had a police.
Well, they're.
That's.
Probably.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
It's such. Oh, my.
Was.
And.
You.
I'm sorry.
It's not.
So.
That's.
Really.
Different ones.
Also, but he's supposed to be.
He worked on it.
Was to be happy.
There.
Forty days.
About three.
Never.
So you know.
That anymore.
This is.
But.
So sometimes.
Not.
Not even.
Well.
It's.
Bad.
It's.
We.
So.
So.
Sorry.
It's.
Whatever.
Your life.
So.
All right.
I'll talk to them.
So.
Then.
It's.
People.
I hope.
It's.
Always.
I think.
I think.
I think.
It's.
It's.
Have you.
Those.
Yeah.
New tattoo.
Yeah.
Who's.
Why?
Sure.
So.
They.
You. As.
Same.
Absolutely.
Joe.
Yeah.
I have.
They're.
There are others.
Three.
Again, they only want.
Wanting.
You.
It's right.
Yes.
Honor.
So.
Visible.
Then.
Just gives me.
Other other ones.
Yeah.
Are you?
That's.
You wanna have.
That.
So.
So, yeah.
The.
General.
My.
Friends.
Remember.
And I.
It's.
Fathers.
Work.
Plus.
That's.
Very.
So.
Okay.
You're.
Okay.
Family.
You're.
I think.
So.
But.
I think.
They're.
Lot.
Right.
Yeah.
One there.
Yeah.
There's.
You.
You.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five.
Yeah.
Three.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was.
On.
There.
It's.
At least.
At least.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Nothing.
First.
So.
I have.
Well, I mean.
Me.
Go away.
Look it up.
I need that until you go.
We're gonna be back.
So.
I'm.
Proud.
I understand that.
Very.
Too long.
Step.
Even.
It's.
Yeah.
So.
When you.
Got.
See.
It's.
Yeah.
You have.
You.
Put.
One.
Yours.
On.
Basically.
Right.
I'm.
You're.
Stayed on.
It's.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's.
Great.
Yeah.
Someone's.
There.
It's.
For everything.
Center.
I.
Yes.
I.
Same.
Those.
Both.
I don't.
Can't.
You're.
In.
You don't.
Have.
It doesn't.
It's.
Not.
Again.
It's.
There's.
History.
No.
No.
My.
Job.
It's.
Very.
Big.
Continue.
You're not.
It's.
We can.
Prepare.
So.
But.
You.
That.
Why?
Say.
I'm.
Sure.
Off.
That.
I.
I.
Have.
To.
Two.
It's.
I'm.
Say.
I probably.
But.
I'm.
So.
No, they're.
You.
You know.
So.
Wait.
Wait.
Hope.
I know.
You're.
Fine.
Yeah.
So.
Either.
Yeah.
It's.
For.
Now.
Says.
A thousand.
It's all.
Right.
You know.
Two.
Thousand.
No.
Wrong.
Right.
They.
So.
They.
Might.
Say.
A hundred.
What?
Here.
What they could do is they don't have.
By.
Because.
All right.
You might call.
You.
You.
That is.
Like.
Like.
I.
Don't.
Like.
But that.
Don't.
Like.
Yeah.
It's.
A nice.
Stuff.
In.
A little bit.
But I would ask.
If.
Quiet.
There.
Yeah.
Quiet.
Here.
Which?
Which column?
You.
Oh, do.
Yeah.
See.
I'm.
Saying.
I'm.
I.
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 You're.
I'm.
You're.
Saying.
Something.
I'm.
Say.
Inside.
And.
I.
See.
That's.
I was.
I'm.
It's.
A whole.
Why?
You.
Just.
Down.
But.
It's.
Like.
Times.
It's.
Not.
Once.
I.
I.
You may agree about.
Yeah.
I know what I'm saying.
There you go.
But.
I also know what you're saying.
You got.
I know.
I thought.
They.
Oh.
I.
Oh.
Oh.
Personally.
I'm.
Like.
I'm.
Just.
My.
And then.
Your.
Mom.
It's.
Oh, no.
All right.
Well.
I.
So.
Well.
I'm.
Very.
You're.
An engineer.
Northern.
Right.
You know.
What?
It's.
Well.
I.
Actually.
Oh.
The.
And.
They're.
Those.
Which.
And.
I.
It's.
It's.
Like.
After.
And.
Well.
Time.
For.
In.
Charlie.
And.
But.
So.
I said.
It's.
All.
That.
Some.
Time.
Oh.
They're like.
Yeah.
I.
I send.
The.
I send.
The.
Church.
You were.
Yeah.
You.
So.
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 I'm.
Very.
Fair.
It's.
Like.
I was.
In.
She's.
I'm.
Say.
Just.
Possibly.
There's.
More.
That is.
A great role.
For these.
I'm.
Chipping.
So.
Like.
You see.
I'm.
About.
I'm.
Well.
I'm.
I'm.
So.
Thank.
So.
Right.
Personal.
I'm.
Being.
I think.
It's.
Kind.
Well.
All.
We.
Yeah.
He was.
We're.
Talking.
As.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm.
I'm.
Try.
Say.
Yeah.
So.
But.
I.
I'm.
Personal.
Citizen.
What?
That's.
So.
You.
That's.
So.
It is.
Be.
I don't.
Grab.
It.
I.
But.
That's.
Yeah.
I'm.
I'm.
I'll.
Be.
Excellent.
So.
I was just.
Okay.
It's.
Okay.
It's.
Same.
It was.
It's.
So.
Has.
It's.
I go.
I'm.
Sure.
And.
I should.
Go.
It's.
Really.
Yeah.
Really.
You.
It's.
Friends.
Yeah.
You.
There's.
You're.
You're.
Actually.
You.
That.
I'm.
I'm.
Actually.
I'm.
And.
It's.
Yeah.
That.
It's.
I'm.
Come.
I don't.
Think.
So.
I.
Can't.
Be.
Yeah.
I think.
You.
It's.
Still.
So.
It's.
I'm.
Yeah.
Right.
And.
Drive.
Well.
I'm.
I'm.
But.
I don't.
So it's, I gave the details of the project. I guess I'll open it up for questions to answer any, any questions you may have on the project.
Thanks. Fourteen months of construction for a, the owner's a food manufacturer and the other one's a contractor. They're going to build the building. I'm not quite sure where this building's at and what exactly you're making.
Oh, so this is a freezer warehouse and cold storage logistics facility. And so they will have clients, food manufacturers in Iowa that will use this facility. Once the food is manufactured to store it and then distribute it from this location. So there will be approximately fifty trucks a day coming into this facility. Between the hours of seven AM and seven PM, though not significant traffic. One, not a significant traffic for this area on two ten, but two, not during hours that are going to disturb people in the area.
And Tracy, I would just note that I asked Dylan to come tonight because we really didn't have much that we could talk about until this point. We did get about a week and a half ago, we got the two property owners agreed to a voluntary annexation, which will help this go a little smoother. It does, because we're in an urbanized area, it does have to go to the city development board, which extends the time period for the annexation. So it'll go through the annexation with the city. We have to send the information to city development board. They approve, and then if they approve it, it's an additional thirty day window after that. I know in working on this early on, the city of Cambridge is within two miles. And another gentleman with the alliance who kind of represents Cambridge. They've got a letter of support from Cambridge for this project. They're not gonna, you know, fight the annexation coming into the city of Huxley. We're slated at our meeting on July twenty second. As we'll set the public hearing for the annexation for our first meeting in August. So we felt it was important to get this information to you all now and kind of start that conversation.
So one more, are we, which side of Interstate thirty five are we? And then we're between two ten and the Cambridge Huxley Road.
So this will be on the, I'm gonna have to. Yes, on your.
South of two ten.
So on your map, two ten is the top of the page and Interstate thirty five is on the right side. And so this will be right along the interstate, on the west side of the interstate and south of two ten.
Thank you.
It's just kind of south of Delilah Roberts property that the DOT is using now for a batch plant. And as a part of this, with this investment coming from the company, we've started work. We had a conversation with the DOT on an immediate rise application, which Dylan's kind of put some of that work together and I've asked for us to kind of help put some costs together. We hope to get eighty percent of that road on five sixtieth paved. And we're actually looking at the east west road, making that a city road as well. To get both of those paved as, as part of our application, which would then allow access to the property north of where this access road would actually be into this hundred and roughly sixty acre parcel that's being brought into the city.
That was going to be my question. Entire parcel going to be looked at the annexation?
Yes, we've got the whole hundred and sixty acres of the Brendeland Farm. And then Dax Clark is on the north side of two ten. He's the only property. He's between the church and the church's parsonage in Bear. So when we looked at this, the county said, you can't create an island. City Development Board would tell us the same thing. So we worked with Mr. Clark for, for some time and he and his wife have agreed to voluntarily annex. We basically had told them we would offer the same sort of incentive that we did to the Shell Dolls. When their little acreage is brought in as part of Chris Gardner's development there on sixty nine, so.
The other property that will be brought in on annexation is the parcel that the DOT owns. And that will be, they won't voluntarily annex because of state owned property, but it will come along with the annexation and is not required for them to voluntarily annex for it to be considered a hundred percent voluntary. So we've got the two private landowners signed off on voluntary annexation. The, the purchase and sale agreement should be completed this, in the next week, I would say. They're in the final details of that negotiation.
Great. Any other questions from council members? Well, on behalf of the council, certainly want to recognize and thank the Ames Regional Economic Alliance and the work you folks have done over the past couple of years, it sounds like on this. Certainly look forward to hearing some additional details and very excited to meet the prospective clients here and, and get this moving for the city of Huxley.
Excellent. Thank you for this opportunity.
Moving along, I need a motion to approve Resolution two five zero five eight approving a purchase of a police vehicle. Need a motion on that.
Offer a motion.
Motion Mr. Riggler?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mulder. Information was in the packet. Are there any additional questions?
Okay, it's all me tonight. So this is our rotation, right, of the six cars. One, from what I read, one goes to the school resource officer. And then we just keep the other one, like, sorry Nate.
As we sit right now, our fleet is five and I'd like to expand it to six. I'm gonna try and get one more year out of this twenty twelve Tahoe if I can make it. Yeah, that's ours. So if we have, right now, if we buy this July one, then we'll be up to six. I'm gonna try and get that extra year. Huxley typically keeps our, our squad cars for about six years and that's why we're gonna do the, this rotation. Once we get done with year six, I've been talking with Travis, who might want to purchase it from us or use it from us for fire department uses, but we'll talk about that when it gets there. He probably wouldn't be interested in this Tahoe that's sitting out there right now, but once we get one of the police packages out of service, he maybe want that. So that's kind of what we're doing. If there's any questions. So at year six, that's when it's going to be the school resource officer's vehicle because the demand on the school resource car is much, much less than what we do to it in regular patrol. That's kind of the thinking behind it.
Thanks.
Can you, can you tell me where we need six cars?
I'm sorry?
Why we need six cars?
Well, right now we're at five and I guess we can get.
Less, less, less of two man cars, but right now.
I'm sorry, you said a two man car?
Yeah, if we did two, two officers and one car.
Do we, do we have two officers on at a time?
No, not all the time, but sometimes we have as much as three.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not getting the math here. So we have one officer on at a time.
Right, that, that's.
And a three shift.
Sometimes you're on.
Sometimes two, because we have our school resource officer, correct?
Right.
And then we have, and we have you on sometimes. So that'd be possibly three cars at one time?
Yeah, and sometimes there's three on patrol, you know, this is a.
I, I just. Yeah, I'm not seeing six.
Council, that's, that's your choice. We'll have to live with that. The chief always has one, right? Perhaps a generally non-rotating, you're effectively on twenty four seven. I know you're not, you're effectively on, so that accounts for one.
Yeah, so, so we have, yeah, we have one that Nate drives, has one all the time. We have one that the school resource or ha, resource officer has at all times. And then we have.
We have one that's shared between two officers and then another one that's shared between two officers with the SRO. And we'll be here. So one is, let's just say number one is fine.
Number two is shared between a sergeant and officer. Number three is shared between a sergeant and officer. Right now I have a patrol officer, regular night patrol and the SRO and number four. And during the school year, we let the, the school resource officer, I just use that just to move the speed trailer. Otherwise, we just don't have faith in that being a regular patrol off, patrol vehicle right now. So that's the rotation. So right now, this summer, every car aside from mine has two officers assigned to it. And the school resource officer's vehicle sits unless I'm moving the speed trailer.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate the question, appreciate the comments. Any additional questions and or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none. I've got a motion and a second. Ask for roll call, please.
Riggler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
From Carrie's, thank you very much. Moving along, item C this evening. I need a motion to approve Resolution two five zero five nine, setting these salaries for FY twenty six. In motion.
Give you a motion.
Motion by Ms. Roberts. Second by Mr. Etcher. See your lights on there?
Yes.
Yeah. Any comments on this or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
I'm staying.
Riggler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
All right, moving along, item D this evening. Need a motion to approve ordinance number five four five, amending the code of ordinances regarding fireworks. This will be the second reading. Any motion for the second reading?
Give you a motion.
Motion by Ms. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Etcher. First reading was two weeks ago. This is the second reading. Nothing has changed from the first, what was approved last time. Are there any additional questions and or comments? I know some council members wanted some additional time for feedback, so I want to make sure you give me an opportunity for comments or questions.
Yeah, I was the one who wanted to make sure to give the public an opportunity just because it had seemed like such a controversial change. I guess maybe a question I have for Heather, would it be you? I saw someone in the city made a post about vandalism with fireworks in the park. I don't, I don't know that we can change it two weeks out from needing something in place, but if that's a consideration at all. Yeah, was that unrelated at all? Or I thought the post said something about fireworks, but maybe I'm, I don't know. I don't trust social media. That's why I wanted to go to the source.
No, we just notified people that that was our third vandalism in the park restroom for this year. So that if those continue, we might have to shut the restrooms down. But that particular one, which was the first time a firework was let off inside of it. It wasn't just a firework. There were other things with the firework, but yes, so that was what that was about.
As long as you're up here, Heather, are fireworks permitted to be discharged on city property, in city parks?
I am not aware.
Okay.
If that's specified anywhere.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't, didn't know.
I'm, I would assume no, but I'm not aware. I'm good, thanks.
All right, see no one else wishing to comment. I would ask for a roll call for the second reading.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Riggler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Okay, we do have the opportunity to waive the third reading. I would probably advise we do such, as we will not be meeting again before the fourth, unless we have a special session. This will take a four fifths vote, so I need a motion to waive the third reading.
Give you a motion.
Motion, Mr. Mulder?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Riggler. Roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Riggler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Now you'd like a motion for the third, correct? Need a motion for the third reading. Motion, Mr. Mulder? Second, second, Mr. Riggler. Comments on the third reading? Roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Riggler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
All right, moving along, item five E this evening is ordinance number five four six, amending the code of ordinances regarding the prohibition of parking, parking and the imposition of fines. Any motion on five E, please?
Make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Etcher? Second, second, Mr. Riggler, thank you. Any questions, comments on this item?
This, is this both the parking ordinances or is this just the? Yeah, it's the whole thing. So this weekend, I did some due diligence and drove around the community. And between Saturday and Sunday, I only found one trailer on the city street was with a boat. So, you know, compliance to our current ordinance, I would say we're probably ninety nine point nine percent. I drove around yesterday around five o'clock. There was some active construction sites, which also complied with our current ordinance. And did not see any other trailers on this streets other than that. I gave the council members a picture that two weeks ago, about one o'clock in the afternoon. This was one of the individuals that came and talked, has a business. This was in front of his residence about one o'clock. I don't know if the trailer was registered to him. I don't have the access anymore to, to run that plate. But this was in front of the re, his residence. I'm just thinking that if we do open up the change in this ordinance the way it is written now, that vehicle will, that trailer will be allowed. And all the trailers that are not on the street right now are possibly going to be on the street after we change this ordinance. I think we should table this at this time. And I think each council member should do some diligence on seeing what's best for the community. This is, this is no rush. I mean, we're changing something that could affect the community a lot. So that's just my speaking on it.
Okay, appreciate those comments, Mr. Etcher.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Rory. I've, I've spent some time driving around every street in town and, and saw some really good compliance to no trailers on the street. Months ago, I did see one or two trailers that were there that were probably the ones that started this whole discussion. And, you know, I know we want to do what's right and, and make something, but, you know, people need to have, think through the effects it's going to have on the construction folks that do have businesses, have worked from home. I, like I've mentioned several times, I bring trailers home myself occasionally and park them in my driveway and. But I, I also, and I showed a few of you the picture of a semi that was offloading wall forms for a brand new construction site. And it was a semi class A, I think, vehicle, truck that Jeff said, so. It was parked and it had delineation outside of it. I'm not sure it was parked overnight or if it was or wasn't, but it was early in the morning when I saw it out there. It was delineated, so you could see it. It had reflectors and cones on both sides of it. And so I was actually impressed that it was delineated. You could see it. Even in the dark, you can see the reflectors and, and not run into it. So I think we have pretty good, or at least what I've seen in the last couple of weeks when I've driven around. I, I, I agree with Rory. If this isn't a big, you know, pressing issue, let's, let's gather some more feedback or let's. I, I could go along with tabling this for now. Make sure we do what's right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mulder.
I would ask if we table it, that we set a date when we're going to bring it back. Mainly for simple fact, we have a habit of tabling things and then never coming back to it. And I personally do not want to be a community that bars everybody from living. I don't think that that's a good plan, so I have no problem looking at things longer, but let's just set a timeline to it.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to tabling it. I'm just wondering, do we need to do anything with it? So I guess when we look at it, we can take that back.
Yeah, my, my question to tabling it would be, I know there are a couple of guys on my street who came in, who will occasionally bring stuff home overnight. That would currently be in violation. But I think the, the feedback we heard is it's not generally enforced unless, unless it's called in or has become a complaint. Technically, I think they'd be in violation with our current ordinance and they came in and provided feedback. So I think if we table it, are we discussing postponing any fines? I guess, Nate, I think that's correct. That's what we did while we were reviewing this, is that we said we're not, we're not ticketing people who, who have something hooked to a vehicle.
We'll ticketing unattached carriers.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, so. I don't know if the rest of council is open to the idea of if it's attached to a vehicle, continuing to postpone that. If we don't make a, if we don't make a change to our current ordinance.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to provide one comment. I think it's absolutely fine to table for now, gather more information, see where you want to go with that. In, in response to your question, would you need to do anything? The one that I would have you look at is the number three. And that is the forty eight hours and then they only move the twenty feet. So that in terms of issuing citations, that's the most problematic at the moment. Not asking you guys to take action on that this evening, but I think if there's going to be some revisions and to the question of whether or not it comes back at all, I do think that that is going to be important for enforcement.
So I think that's the one that worries me the most, right? If we open up for forty eight hours, now everybody's just parking everything out on the street for forty eight hours. Because we said, hey, it's fine for forty eight hours. We're before it was off the street, so.
Sure, and that could be limited too. I mean, we could have, there's no magic to the forty eight hours. It could be something other than that. But I think just trying to determine if they move it two inches, is that a violation or now they compliant?
And I was on the opposite, like if I have a boat, I want to be able to park it there and then take it out.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
So Erin, to make our, we have that on just a forty eight hour parking violations. So we should change that ordinance to the twenty foot. That, that would make it a lot easier for the law enforcement to issue citations and, because now if, if they're, the, the people are saying, well, I moved it two inches, you know, there's, there's a dispute.
I'm suddenly now compliant and so that becomes a tough ticket to write. And where it lives currently, that forty eight hour restriction is in the sixty nine oh five, which you see in the ordinance is, is stricken, proposed to be stricken. It just reads kind of weird because it's talking about what's prohibited more than the forty eight hours. So that's at least one section that, that I guess I would encourage you guys to at least revisit at some point.
Does twenty, sorry. Does a twenty foot move it then to, that's far enough that it doesn't just sit in the same property? It's basically going to your neighbor's house or something, right? Is that what the twenty foot?
Correct.
Okay.
But the twenty foot also allows the law enforcement to say, yeah, we, they, they definitely moved it between this area.
Right, or they didn't.
Or they didn't, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Hearing a pretty strong consensus to table this, Mr. Etcher, I believe the motion was yours. We can table this until the July eight or twenty second. Do you wish to table until one of those dates?
We would need, we'd need to have Mr. Etcher rescind his original motion and then he could, yeah, and then he could follow that with a motion to table.
So I rescind the original motion and wish to table the issue until July twenty second meeting?
Can I get a clarifying point before we get a second? Is that going to also then answer the question, are we going to continue on with the enforcement of the ordinance like we are currently? Are we agreeing to do that as we table that?
That was going to be my question as well.
Is that the general consensus to what, what PD's been doing for the last month, which I think is what they were doing previous? Continue with that same practice until July twenty second when they receive additional direction? Is that the general? Okay, good. All right, who was the second originally? Mr. Riggler?
Oh, do I second again?
Okay, Mr. Riggler has approved the second. Any further comments or questions before we call the vote to table? Roll call, please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Riggler?
Yes.
All right, moving along, you did have department reports in your packet. Are there any additional reports from staff? Seeing no one rise, Forrest? Erin? Thank you, ma'am. Barb? David?
Good this evening as well.
Moving right along, Mr. Murphy?
Nothing, right, not you.
Mulder? Riggler? Etcher?
So Mr. Murphy brought up a good point just a little bit ago about, we have a couple of issues that I believe that we need to address and bring to the council. One is the centennial easement with the family. I, I, I don't remember the family's name, but we, we need to bring that and then give them an answer. I mean, we've been, it's been prolonged for months now. And then also the development agreement with the Quick family. I think those two should be a priority that we should be bringing forward and giving those people an answer. I would just note that the Herons, we, we have them slated for the next meeting for the work session. And regarding the Quicks development agreement, I had reached out to Amy Bjork right after we had that meeting with the Quicks. We have a, she said she's about two weeks behind on development agreements, but we do have a call scheduled for this Thursday to talk about that. So we'll probably, hopefully by the end of July, first of August on that one. It just depends how quick she can turn it out, but she's, she was behind on development agreements a couple of weeks for other folks.
So mine's on the development agreement also. I don't want to spend any money. Like I missed a meeting. Evidently I missed a lifetime here, talking about this development agreement. I don't want to spend in any money on that at this point unless I'm already four to one and it doesn't matter kind of thing. I just don't know how to bring that up here.
Any city cost will be recaptured or not, the city expenses?
If we revise the agreement, within that agreement, we could capture any costs that we incur through bond council. Working on that agreement, yes.
So we have that opportunity, whether council wishes to exercise that or not, will be a.
So are you saying we should talk about it in a work session before we move forward with a development agreement being discussed? Is that, yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay, we'll put that on the next work session and I'll hold off on that discussion with Amy. And I have another one I can visit with her about on Thursday.
I feel like there's something else, but I can't think of it, so that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. That will, I, I have no further comments this evening either. That will conclude our regular business for the June twenty fourth meeting. We do have a work session planned this evening with four items. Item A this evening is a discussion regarding additional services to be provided by the Ames Regional Economic Alliance. Brenda?
Well, good evening, council and mayor and staff here at Huxley. So appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you during work session. You know, again, a lot of things going on in your community. And I've spent more time here in the last six, eight months than I had for a couple of years. And the growth of the community is impressive. Growth outside of residential too is some really unique things on the commercial and retail front. And so, you know, you were the first community our organization signed a contract for services for, for economic development. And so we, we cite that level of trust often when we're visiting with other places. So it's really serendipity that we're here tonight talking about how, how we feel like we can help your community even further. And so I believe, did they see the proposal we're talking about?
Yes.
In your packets?
Yeah, the proposal was included.
This is really some conversations with David, some conversations with some of the businesses in the community. Just the general, how quickly in the number of new people that are moving to Huxley and saying, how can we assist in maybe filling a void that a traditional Main Street or Chamber of Commerce organization would fulfill? So again, we work in a lot of communities where there's Main Street organizations or Chamber of Commerces. Huxley is very unique because you don't have that. And so what we're presenting and proposing generally is detailed in, in Dan's memo to you all. But again, the overall purpose really would be to enhance communication, marketing, networking and the promotional efforts of the community and really in support of the businesses you have here today as well as future businesses. So, you know, we spend a lot of time with your big employers. So, you know, we spend a lot of time with your big employers. We do stop and we see your smaller employers, but this would be ratcheting up those efforts some. It would be supporting and driving the development of some business-related content, either on the city's site or, or working in partnership with HDC using their website to amp up things related to, to business. Work to even further develop relationships with retail and commercial businesses. Implementing two new promotional events. So you have some businesses in your community right now that are doing a great job, holding events, trying to bring people to communities. We would work with the businesses and, and really put forth a, a larger effort to have two events again, complimentary to maybe one other events occurring in the region. So these would be driving business to the, really the retail businesses in the community. We coordinate six annual events. So at our business appreciation event that we held last fall, I mean, there was triple the amount of attendance than we've ever had at those events. And that's because your businesses are growing in number as well as I think the support they're looking for. So what we're proposing is that we host two lunch and learn events for your businesses as well as for networking opportunities. So give them an opportunity to get together and talk. And also we'll promote those regionally so that other folks can attend. And then we'd work with our young professionals group to ensure that one event every year is held in Huxley. Again, to, you have a young, younger community than a lot of our communities. I think it would be great to be able to showcase your community. That group is right now at a hundred and eighty young folks. And so we'd like to the opportunity to host an event during the year here. A lot of our efforts would really be focused on communication and marketing. So again, where you think about us today, marketing your industrial sites and your commercial areas, we'd actually be doing more community-related marketing. We do features and initiatives on the folks that are underwriting the public sector investment. We would assemble and distribute a monthly email newsletter. So we have a weekly newsletter that goes out at the Ames Main Street. It's got a neat look, it's a quick read. And so what we're proposing to start is to do a monthly email that anybody in town or anybody interested in Huxley could be able to access to know what's going on the coming month. So if you're interested in what we're envisioning that to look like, I'd direct you to the Ames Main Street email distribution. That's more community-minded than some of the other things we do from the chamber. We'll maintain a calendar of events to be featured on the website and in the monthly newsletter. So some of you know that I get the opportunity to work in Nevada. And Nevada has a monthly publication. It's a joint publication that goes out to everybody within the school district in Nevada. And the most popular piece out of all of that is the joint calendar on the back page. And I think people in the community so appreciate at a glance, knowing when there's a school activity, when there's a council meeting, when there's a special event on the weekends. And our team would work to, to put that, that, that calendar of events that could live on the website and again, be routed the month prior to, to what's going on. So again, we have found that that has been one of the most important pieces. Like if we stopped the, if we stopped the magazine, people would really cry out that they don't have that, that calendar of events. The other thing I know from working in Nevada is that their Chamber of Commerce used to do welcome packets and welcome letters. And when they did away with their chamber and, and did just Main Street, this was something that was missing. And so I would propose we add this to a contract where again, part of the good thing about us doing this with, in partnership with the city is we'll be able to access the new folks that are moving into town. We'll send them a letter on behalf of the council and welcoming them to the community. We'll highlight the folks and the businesses that are underwriting the, like I said, the private sector investment. We'll do a QR code that goes right to the business directory that we've been working with you all on already. And then also encouraging them to sign up for the monthly newsletter. So when and if we go down this road together, we'll, we'll start right away with really pushing engagement and getting people to sign up for that newsletter. So again, we'll really work on getting the new folks in line. So we'll promote the networking opportunities, we'll promote the lunch and learn. What we found in other communities is that maybe they don't own a business town, but they're working from their home and they might be interested in a social media lunch and learn. So excited to be able to offer that service to the community. We continue and would enhance our support of the Huxley Business Grant. It's already been very popular and, and again, working with the businesses to make sure they're, they're getting the information they need, that it's aligning really with the things the council wishes. We'll designate a liaison from our team to lead this initiative. So I've been working in economic development for thirty years. I do projects, I do community development, I do housing, I do not do chamber Main Street. And so excited to introduce you to the person here in a bit that will serve in this role should you decide to execute the contract with us. The other thing is since we only have a marketing contract with you all, it isn't been a contract that maybe we would include in on kind of our affiliate organization. So I would envision, and that would be part of our contract is with the additional investment from the private sector as well as you all, that would escalate the community of Huxley up to an affiliate with our organization and excited to be able to share what that can mean maybe at a future work session. We'll go out and solicit the private sector contributions to match what the, the city will do. We're proposing that you give us about three years to get to that even amount. We'll come back and report biannually on this effort. So this is in addition to the economic development effort. So you'll still be working with my team on the economic development stuff. But we'll, we'll make sure that we're doing it and staggering those meetings so that you get an opportunity to visit with one of our team. But specifically they'll report on the efforts that are identified in the proposal. We'll also report out to HDC. You know, they're really the, the private sector partner. And I want to make sure that we're keeping them also communicated with. So we're proposing an additional twenty thousand dollars a year. We'd ask that you sign a contract with us for three years. I wish I, I believe we're going to notice a difference right away. And being able to get a promotional event done either fall or ahead of holiday. We'll get in a couple of events. Like I said, I think in starting right away on getting those letters out to your new people, I think will, will be impactful. We're targeting from the private sector in year run, raising fifteen thousand seventeen-five in year two and then coming to the full twenty thousand match in year three. And you have my commitment that if there's a pinch point and we're missing an opportunity somewhere or you feel like that's not adding value, please, we don't have to wait for a regular update, you know, communicate that. We want to make sure that this is, this is working for you all, that it's adding value. It's a good use of the taxpayer money for the, the public support of the project. Again, I think it's a very unique deal in terms of your community growth. And I feel like giving some additional attention and promotion will help you retain some of these really key things that you've worked hard and put infrastructure investment in to support. So with that, before I take questions, I want to introduce you to Travis Tolliver. And we're thrilled to have Travis on our team. So he's our Vice President of Business Development. And when we were interviewing Travis, I said, Travis, you're going to start by running the Ames Main Street. But Travis, I'm going to have you run something else later on. So he's been, been waiting and, and this just seems like we can add value to your community. And so Travis has been in this business for. Yeah, so plus ten years came to us from Waverly. So ran the chamber and the Main Street in Waverly. It's been a great addition. And again, we'll, we'll do an awesome job, be a great resource for your business community. And again, is doing a lot of these similar things with the campus town in Ames as well as the Main Street names. So again, we're just, and, and I would tell you, this is the first community that we're, we're throwing this idea out on and it just feels like we can add value. So what, what do you have for questions for me on this?
I don't know if I have any specific questions. I thought that was a really good summary. Are we, is it July that we re-up? Like we tried to get ahead of that. We were always.
No, we, our contract is up. And so that, that, this would be, what I'm proposing is that we would extend the contracts. We would do one contract, one part for economic development services like we've done in the past, the same sorts of things related to marketing. It's fun to think about that we might have some additional industrial sites to promote here in the community. So that stuff I propose stays the same. And that whatever that amount is, we're not proposing an increase. I, I think maybe there was a small increase.
There was an increase, which was taken to council during our budget.
Budget, so.
And nobody had any issues with the increase for that.
So this would be twenty thousand on top of that specifically to some of the things that we've addressed. And, and if there are things that you're hearing that you think we could help with on this really community development, retail development. You know, you know, again, this is, I'd get your comments to David and we'd certainly consider adding that.
I would just note that when, when Brenda came to me with this idea, I thought it was a pretty good idea. This is the first community in thirty-eight years that I've worked for that doesn't have a Chamber of Commerce. I've watched Travis, since he's come on board, I go to all the monthly meetings. I've heard him speak. He's, he's a pretty dynamic person. I think he'd be a really good fit for our business community. And as you recall, earlier this year, we talked about, we put it in a ad into Discover Ames. Our, our, our business community suffered quite a bit last year. I'm sure they're going through some of the same struggles again this year, which is kind of a promotional piece. But I think this is kind of that next step. And if council would agree to, to fund this, I, I think we fund this through the local option sales tax. That's just, they're the folks that are bringing that, that are driving a lot of those dollars here. And I think that's a good way to give back to them to provide some services and just some networking events and, and a lot of the other things with the communication, I think would be a boost for our business. I've had several business owners come in and talk about, you know, what can we do to do this? And they come up with an idea, but they're busy like everybody else and it doesn't always take off and go. Where I think here, I think we would, you know, when, when we have that idea, we have these things promoted, it's, it's going to get done. And, and, and Brenda is right, when we had our event last fall, I think we had a hundred and thirteen people that showed up. And the previous year it was maybe forty.
Yeah, it was like three times the amount. So, and again, I feel like too, so it's not only the attraction of people in to support the businesses. It's really about hitting the, the folks that are here in town, that work outside of town and just making them aware of all the things that are going on as well as making sure that people, when they move here, they can become engaged in the community. And so, yeah, I, I'm excited and again, it's not set in stone. And we're, we're always up for continuing, improving and pivoting if we need to on things that aren't working. And if we find out we need more lunch and learns and less networking or vice versa, you know, it's, it's simple enough to be able to make those adjustments. So we'd love the opportunity to be able to continue to enhance our support.
I, I, I think it'd be a great addition. I think it's needed. I think we just finished the budget, so I want to know, you know, make sure we can fit it in the budget. I, I don't know when the timing is right, but we're, we're still growing like heck. And it'd be nice to have more opportunity there. How does that align? So, so I'm, I'm in favor for it. I don't know if the timing is the right timing for it. If we can handle the budget, you said we could do it through local option tax if we can. But we just set the budget for next year that starts in a week.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think what Barb and I talked, you know, we'd put some money aside for, for administration. And I think we're willing to take the, or twenty thousand out of the money that was allocated into the administration revolving loan fund for the first year to, to get this thing going. And then going forward, we would, we'll just make some tweaks as how we divvy up that local option fund dollars.
Okay. And I'm curious on, on what the Huxley Development Corp., I don't know if you're, you're, you know, if those folks and those guys are still as supportive of something like that and, and weren't able to, you know, look at it extra.
And he starts to say something.
Exactly.
Scott Renaud, Huxley Development Corp. President. Yeah, we're quite in favor of moving forward with this. You know, Brenda and your team have done an excellent job and, and we are landless right now. So we're a little bit more of a cheerleader, but honestly, we don't have the kind of time that it takes to do some of these things. So we're in, in favor of this.
Awesome, because I was hoping if they're looking for extra money and, and they were pointing towards groups like yours, maybe, maybe. If you were supportive of it, that'd be helpful to offset those costs. How does this three-year alignment align up with our current economic development contract? Should that, is that a three-year contract as well? And, and should it be in alignment with this or is this kind of standalone?
I'm going to look to you because I can't remember.
I think our economic development contract is just a yearly contract that, that comes before council. So I wouldn't have an issue with this just being its own standalone three-year agreement. And Barbara reminded me that we've done quite well with our interest this year. We've made some really good changes with our investment policy and we've more than.
We'll have three times the interest issue.
So, but I'm still opting to use of our local option tax from the administration side to cover this first year.
Well, I will say one thing, before Barb came, I, I was basically ready to vote that we no longer did the contract. I've been totally impressed with everything that's been done in the last couple of years. Yeah, I'm sorry, Brenda. You know?
Yeah.
I mixed up all the kids too. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mixed up all the kids too. But I have been totally impressed here in the last couple of years of what you have done for us and the help. And if we're getting the support from the Huxley Development Commission, I, I'm all in favor also.
Appreciate those comments. Getting a thumbs up. Yeah, Brenda, as has been stated, I certainly think you and your team have done a tremendous job and Huxley wouldn't be where we are without your team. So I'm very supportive of this moving forward. I think you'll continue to provide some much-needed support for our businesses and community and look forward to working with you on this, so.
Good. And like I said, feedback and communication is important. So if you're hearing things we're not doing or things that, you know, but let's, we can pivot fast. So I would, I would also echo Barb's being a rock star city clerk too. So it's a treat to work with Dave and Barb and it's been great for our team too, so.
Thank you very much. All right, moving, moving along, we have a presentation of the Public Works Building Plans.
We have just a couple of minutes to get everything ready. You will see at the top of your screens, you have a PDF file called twenty-two-five dot O-six dot twenty-four ninety-five percent permit drawing. I, if you would like to follow along on your screens, you can do that. Otherwise Christopher's presentation will be up on the TVs.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Christopher Orth with Farnsworth Group. Thank you for the time this evening to share with you the progress on our, our Public Works project that we've been designing for you. With your permission, I'm going to sit down at Barb's computer and kind of drive the presentation from there, so. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. There's about sixty-seven sheets of drawings, which I think were in your packets. So hopefully you've had a chance to, you know, really dig into those and, and take a look at all those drawings. I'm probably not going to flip through every sheet, but I do want to kind of hit some highlights for you and just kind of give you an overview of, of where we're at. If there are specific questions, we can circle back to any of those sheets and we'll gladly dig in and, and answer your questions that you may have. So first off is. So first off is kind of our cover photo. Just want to zoom in here a little bit and bear with me just a bit while I get the feeling of the mouse. So this is kind of a view of the, the building from the southwest, southeast, looking to the northwest. On the, on the right-hand side of the building will be the administration area. And then on the left-hand side will be the garage spaces. Next one I wanted to show you is our landscaping plan, which is also a version of our site plan. We've got an entrance that's an existing drive off of East First. And we're planning to pave that back to the new entry to the Public Works Building as a part of our base bid. And then we have an alternate to extend that drive back to the wastewater facility fence gate that crosses the road. It's about 890 feet to the north. Off of the, the entry here, we've got some parking for, for staff. And if there's any public visitors, we're required to have a handicap accessible parking stall. Off of the drive a little further in, we've got bay access from the south. We've got a fueling area. We've got access to the, through the west bay, which you'll see in a little bit for some additional vehicles from both the west and from the south. Further west on the site, we're identifying this as a salt storage structure. And then we've got some dry material storage bunks. It'll be gravel and sand and fill material, things like that, that they'll use in their activities. Right now we're showing a fence wrapping around the parcel. It's about two and a half acres that'll be enclosed by the fence. We've got some landscaping trees along the south edge of the parcel. We've got some, some planting around the administration building sidewalk and the flagpole that you saw in the image, and then a couple of trees along the east side as well. Next I'm going to take us to the floor plan. Building is, is about 18,400 square feet. 16,000 of it is in the garage and about 2,400 is here on the east side for the administration area. We've got an entry vestibule into the admin area. We've got four offices, a break and training room, a couple of restrooms, a locker room area, another restroom with a shower that can be used for changing, a map room and a mechanical electrical room to the north. And then as we work our way into the garage bays, we've got some workshop space that'll be below our mezzanine. And we've got a parts and tool storage room. So we've got a stair access to the north here and, and this area will be raised up with a precast concrete floor structure. Gives additional storage and some flexibility in that way. These first two bays will be primarily used for maintenance. We've got a four-post lift that we've identified as an add alternate. If the, the bids come in, we'll definitely look to provide that lift. We're trying to hit that target of, of where we're at with the budget. So we've got trench drain in this bay to drain the floor space, some area for fabrication. Area to the north here, this bay is identified as a wash bay and we're planning for a hot seat power washer that'll feed into that space so that they can keep the equipment clean. And then the west bay that I talked about a little bit earlier also has a trench drain and would provide additional storage space for vehicles and equipment. Just wanted to illustrate our salt storage structure. We're planning on 10-foot tall concrete walls with a fabric arch structure on top of that. Our basis of design for that fabric structure is Clear Span, which is made in Dyersville. So a good local company there. And then just wanted to give you a little bit more of a glimpse of the building. We kind of already looked at that southeast perspective. So kind of zooming in, this is the, the northeast perspective, kind of the back of the building. There's a fence along that backside between the water plant and the, the new public workspace. Then from the southwest, again, we talked about that door on the west side, the fueling area and the doors off of the south side. It's really good to have doors on the south side because it'll make life a whole lot easier with snow and ice, having that southern exposure. And then this is the northwest perspective. So we're taking all of our roofs, our slope to the north. And so all of the drainage will happen on the backside of the building. Helps just kind of keep that under control and then that'll be piped toward the, toward the ditch along first. Last item I wanted to look at is, this is the monument sign that we're planning for right now. It's got the City of Huxley logo, East First, and then we're planning to put all three addresses of the three, the three buildings that would be there. We'll have the sign sitting perpendicular to the road and it'll have the, the signage on both faces. So you'd see it either coming from, from Huxley or from Cambridge. That's what I planned to present. And again, if you have specific questions, we can delve into those.
Just a couple of questions based on your presentation there. They're just renderings. I don't see a generator in the, the renderings. Is there a generator planned for this?
We, we do have one planned. That is also an add alternate at this point in time. We will, we'll have the, the capacity to add it in the future as a part of our base bid. And, and the intent and hope is that we can, we can afford all of the alternates. But we're just trying to identify some things to make sure we're on budget.
I, I guess I'd have some concern if this facility did not have a generator. If it's an ice storm and we're without power for two days and we can't open overhead doors to get the trucks out or pump our own fuel. That seems problematic to me from a operational standpoint.
So for operational standpoint, right now, we pull a cord, we lift the doors as same as what we could do with these. We run our generator, we run a generator, run our fuel pumps. So without power during deratio and all of that, that's what we're doing now. It would be similar concept until we could afford to put it in CIP to move forward with a generator in, in this facility.
This is probably, well, clearly it's not being designed as a critical operation facility then.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Would have been nice if we wouldn't have gotten rid of, sold the generator, huh?
That was all. The reason we got rid of it.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. The locker room. It's kind of unique. That's a unisex locker room on A101.
That is correct. In conversations with the team, it made more sense to have a, a unisex locker room and any changing or showering would occur in, in the restroom. It didn't seem like that was something that happens with significant regularity. And so to, to then have two locker rooms didn't really seem to be a good use of space and, and resources.
Okay. Yeah, it, it sounds like some thoughts have been put into that. I appreciate it from an HR standpoint that has some concern. It may in the future, but I appreciate that there's been some thought and consideration put into that at least. As part of this bid package, is there an inclusion to deal with the old buildings, the buildings that we're moving out of due to structural defects, safety issues, et cetera? I mean, there's a reason we're moving out. It was electrical issues. It was a host of reasons.
That, that work was not included in our scope and our contract. If that's something you want us to look at in the future, we'd certainly be willing to.
I think, I think the main building that Matt uses is the one that we've got the biggest issues with. And I think that's something that I, I think our staff and time can tear that down ourselves and dispose of. I've tore down a lot of buildings over the last 20 years and various communities. And I mean, if you've got a backhoe or rent a small trackhoe, you can take that down very easily in a couple of days, probably.
Okay. Appreciate that. And the last thing, maybe you touched on this and I missed it, the timeline kind of moving forward here.
Yeah, I didn't touch on it yet, but thank you. Our plan is to come have the notice to bid and setting the public hearing on the July 8 agenda. And then we would issue documents for bidding the following day to various contractors. Our plan is to receive bids August 5 and then present those on August 12 at the council meeting that evening, along with the public hearing and hopefully an award that evening. And then have the contracts back in front of you on August 26 for approval, with construction potentially starting the following week, depending on their mobilization schedule. And then our, our hope is that they can be substantially complete sometime in the early summer months of 2026. We've asked as a part of their bid form, what their timeframe to completion is. And then we typically write that date into the, the contract.
Perfect. Thank you. Additional comments or questions from council? Okay. I think you've got it covered well. I appreciate the update. Thank you. It's project. Thank you. Up next, item 7C, this evening is the water and sewer rates. Mr. Schultz.
So I, I brought copies of the material that was presented at the June 10th meeting. Does anybody need that? Okay. All right. Well, I'll, first of all, does anyone have any questions? Okay. I'll, I'll just, if, if, if it's workable for you, Mr. Mayor, I'll just give a, a brief overview. I'll, I'll start with sewer, if that's workable. So, so there were three scenarios presented for the sewer utility rate adjustments. They're provided in the, really in the context of not quite knowing obviously what the future wastewater plant cost is expected to be. So kind of some background, the rate adjustments for sewer are proposed effectively for the following reasons. To, to keep pace with inflation. Everyone knows that's what's been happening in that regard. The, the background item on the sewer revenue debt service, that's been about $37,000 to $40,000 per year from FY 22 to FY 25. In the upcoming year FY 26, that bumps up to about $110,000 per year. In December of 2021, the city had called in and paid off 330,000 principal on your 2013 sewer revenue debt. That lowered the payment for that, that four-year period. And now that payment will jump back up. You only have one sewer revenue debt outstanding in your 2009 SRF sewer revenue debt. And that has, has payments on it through 2039. Another reason, the revenue for debt service in the sewer fund, that was roughly 476,000 in fiscal year 22. That's dropped down to the most recently completed fiscal year, 326,000. Just that, that profit or revenue for debt's been eroding simply with the operating cost inflation. What, what, what I'd laid out for three options for the rate adjustments were the following scenario, A for sewer had 9% adjustments, trying to stay below that 10% per year threshold. 9% adjustments in 2025, 26 and 27 with 5% adjustments in 28, 29. Scenario B had six and a half percent rate adjustments in 2025, 26 and 27, four and a half percent in, at 28 and 29. And scenario C had 5% adjustments for the next three years and then 4% in 28 and 29. To, to try to kind of put some bookends or a perspective on this for looking ahead to the wastewater plant. If you focus just on scenario A, and that, that reflects a million dollars in sewer fund cash being generated over the next four years through June 30, 2029. Million dollars in cash being applied to the wastewater plant project. Those rate adjustments support a bond issue of about roughly $7 million, 6 million from bonds, pardon me. Seven, a $7 million project, a million from cash and 6 million from bonds. So if you do nothing else other than scenario A, that's where you'd sit for the wastewater plant. 6 million in bonds in sewer revenue. And then a million is reflected in, in sewer fund cash generated over the next four fiscal years, FY 26 to FY 29. So scenario B generated about 850,000 in sewer fund cash over four years for the wastewater plant. Scenario C generated roughly 620,000 in sewer fund cash for the wastewater plant. So I, I'm, I'd encourage, you know, the wastewater plant's going to be a costly item. I'd encourage either scenario A or, or B to be considered. I, I note that the councils had particular approaches that you wanted to take toward what user rates in the past. These scenarios simply assume in a uniform across the board rate adjustment. All rate classes, the, the base rate, the rate per thousand is all assumed to be adjusted by the same percentage, just as a, as a starting point. So. Happy to answer any questions on sewer with, with that or you want to?
Yeah, I guess I don't really have anything additional to comment on. I did spend some time putting together comparable populations and what their rates are. Now I will preface that, one, we don't know what their growth is right off the bat. Two, I didn't put in here what their treatment plants are. So that's going to make a big difference on what their rates are. So yes, it, it kind of gives us an idea where people are at or other cities, I should say. But it's not a true science at, by any stretch of the imagination. So, I mean, I don't know, did this get handed out? Okay. So yeah, I mean, I did, I did the median average and then the average overall. You can kind of see that at the bottom. I mean, the big part that I was really curious about was how our neighboring communities are billing. And, you know, just to kind of see where they're at now, I will say, I mean, unless you're getting into Ames, you know, Ankeny doesn't really have anything for treatment wise. Ames, you got treatment. They're considerably larger population. So you can divide that cost out a little easier. So I mean, really, again, there's not a true science to that. So was it very interesting to see how other cities land? Yes. But overall, I don't think it's a perfect reflection of where we should be at. I will say that even at $7 million, I could very easily see our wastewater plant for what we're looking at, it's going to be way over that. So I, I would think you'd be, what, 10 to 20? Pretty easy. So you're talking a lot of concrete to duplicate the process we have. We've got plans that when our plant was originally designed to basically duplicate everything from Headworks back at our plant. So there's designs to basically show that for a plane expansion. But I would guess you'd be well over $10 million if that's the scenario we go with. Now, if we can figure out ways to manage what we have, I'm all for that. Especially because we get over that million gallons and now we got to do a lot more testing. So.
Okay. Appreciate those. Any questions regarding?
So we got this new business, sounds like it's coming in. What's that going to add to?
Well, if they're just using it for storage and freight transport, I don't foresee that really being a big industry load. But I wasn't aware of the food production till tonight. So that could be a problem. So if they're just storing, that's one thing, you know, you could have a spill. Freezers could go down. Well, then we might have some problems. But if, you know, we go into the production side of it, now you're talking food production. Yeah, you're talking either very large pretreatment process or figuring out how we're going to offset that. And our codes will not allow that high of a discharge. So I think we're fairly protected, but you know, see how that evolves.
So if it's designed in accordance with our ordinances, our codes. So if it's designed in accordance with our ordinances, our codes, there should not be an impact effectively.
No, shouldn't be, but now, have I dealt with this before? Yes, absolutely. Said it wasn't gonna be an impact and now it's an impact, so.
I just want to follow up. So you said ten million, so we're talking the the thing that was presented, he's saying seven million. What where's this ten million you guys are talking about?
So we're looking at possibility of a plant expansion at the wastewater plant. Um, just based off of our loadings, it's something that needs to be talked about. We're hopefully gonna get on back on board with that here this fall. Get something out for an RFP to figure out what the engineering side of it's gonna look like. Um. Like I said before, if we do duplicate our process, Headworks back, um, yeah, you're you're talking. I would, you know, that'd probably be more of a forest question on where we're gonna be in cost, but I would say we're gonna be well over the ten million. So.
In addition to the seven or total?
I'd say you're between ten to twenty million, pretty easy. Just from what I've seen, numbers out and about, I I don't know, even from some of this, when I was collecting some of these rates, it was pretty interesting to see kind of how these other cities are running in um SRF loans and stuff like that, how they're putting that into their rate is is kind of interesting to see. So.
So are you and Forrest looking at the population growth, the way we're going right now, three to five years down the road, or what are we looking at for her? Like this ten to twenty million dollars in an expansion?
We're shooting from a hip.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but I'm just get, I mean, just give me a ballpark.
But we could be looking at twenty year, twenty year growth.
Okay.
Look at, like, where are we gonna be twenty years? What do we need to do for that twenty year period? But AJ's right, waste garden, you can plant like costs or or we've seen a tremendous increase in those costs over the last five years.
So yeah, we don't have a for sure number, but I would definitely side on the scenario A. Just to hopefully pad the bank account a little bit and, you know, and this is also not taken into account that that's a three what was it, three or three and a half percent increase across the board on our budget? In all reality, I really hope to not see that. And in most cases, I don't see a three percent increase across my entire budget. The last five to six years I've been doing a budget. So I don't go through every number and, you know, add three percent. It's I look at every unnumber every line item and go through, okay, we went over this one, why? And then I'll usually get with Barb, figure out why, does it need an increase? So hopefully not go over that three and a half percent overall, but.
Okay, more questions. Um, if we go with the new plant and then we have to do the expansion. And we do this adjustment, like we're telling people like we're planning on all this adjustment, this nine percent, we're good through twenty eight, twenty nine. That I I was leaning more towards the B plan, but now hearing this, I'm concerned a little bit. Um, and it will be a shock. We haven't done rate increases for a while. We we become very unpopular. It has to be done. I mean, something has to be done. I guess I don't know my question. I just wasn't realizing we're talking this big of a dollar figure and is that the only way to go, right? Otherwise, bond more out or we maxing out our bonds at this point? Yeah, seven millions it.
It's an unknown that I was working on with a little bit on on the user rates. Um. I I that assumes a twenty-year payment structure, so trying to be more cost effective. That the last wastewater plant in two thousand nine, that was structured over thirty years. I think there was reluctance to increase rates to pay it off over twenty. Um, so I've assumed a twenty-year payment structure. Uh, this doesn't solve if your wastewater plant cost is fifteen million, this doesn't. This is not the complete solution. It's just a start. It it was developed kind of in the vacuum of not knowing what the cost is, so. Uh, I think Councilman Mulder had perhaps proposed, do you just start with a one-year rate increase or two or three? That's a possibility too. And and there's not a perfect solution, but I I think getting a start is a step in the right direction.
Okay, any additional questions or comments on sewer rates? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Are you looking for definitive direction on a plan at tonight or not?
I would defer defer to your staff on that.
I think we're, there are there are some other fees that are a part of this besides the water and wastewater, and I think, you know, there was we were tasked with looking at all of our fees and kind of seeing where we're going. So I think we just are looking maybe for if you've got an idea where you want to go at this meeting, fine, otherwise it could wait a couple of weeks, but uh I don't think we want to wait too terribly long.
Oh, fair enough.
Good, good. All right, uh, onto water then. Um, I'll just go to page two of nineteen of the the handout. Uh, just some background and water, similar to sewer, the just purpose for the rate increases are keeping up with the general inflation. Uh, a couple highlights on the two thousand twenty one water revenue debt. Uh, roughly nine hundred and forty thousand principal on that debt issue alone's been paid off. You have roughly six and a half million of outstanding water revenue debt at this point in time. Your general obligation debt for the sewer, uh, excuse me, for the water project is about um was about four and a half million, so um about eight hundred, eight hundred and forty five thousand of that's been paid off so far. Um, the two thousand twenty one water revenue debt has a, what's called a rate ma- maintenance covenant. So you have the water fund has to produce a dollar twenty in net revenues for every dollar debt service. For FY twenty two, twenty four, twenty five, that debt service coverage ratio is projected to be about one point two two times. So you're getting getting pretty tight in terms of the net revenues for debt divided by the water revenue debt service, the general obligation debt service doesn't count uh for that calculation. Uh, also, the uh in in addition to the in- increased operating expenses for water, the budget for FY twenty five, twenty six and water has about four hundred and eighty thousand in capital outlays, cash funded capital outlays uh proposed to be expended for that budget year. Uh, so purpose for the rate increases are to keep the water fund financially sound and in in good shape uh going forward. So. Uh, scenario A for water, just to step through them briefly, has a six percent rate increase in twenty five, five percent in twenty seven, four and a half percent. Excuse me, uh, six percent in twenty five, five percent in twenty six, four and a half percent in twenty seven, three and a half percent in twenty eight. Scenario B has four point seven five percent annually in twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. Three and a half percent in twenty, three percent in twenty nine. And then scenario C is the lowest uh three percent rate adjustments, three and three and three quarter percent in twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight. And then three and a quarter percent in twenty twenty nine. So we're, the council had adopted in uh two thousand twenty one water rate adjustments through July first of two thousand twenty five. That July first adjustment is probably not quite adequate, given the inflation that in operating expenses the water fund has seen. But that has been adopted on on July one of two thousand twenty five. That is proposed to be replaced by the two thousand twenty five rate adjustment with with water. So um happy to go through more details or answer questions as as you need.
What's our twenty five adjustment? We don't have one now.
For water, it's.
Three percent, so, okay. So whatever we do, we'll be going up if we adjust that to either three and a half, four and three quarters, sorry, three and three quarters, four and three quarters or six. Is what I just heard, okay?
Right, that's right.
I believe I asked this question last time, but I I apologize, I don't recall you. I had asked if we knew what the average monthly bill or usage was, and I couldn't remember if someone said it was closer to the thirty five hundred or five thousand gallons. But just to put like a dollar amount to what people are gonna see.
If you. So that's three.
So amongst council, we're between that thirty five and five thousand gallons per month, depending on.
Thousand per person.
Yeah. That helps. I was trying to put a dollar figure kind of what this is gonna look like.
So if you if you assume a thirty five hundred gallon per month customer on scenario A, this is on page um six of nineteen. Not to get into too much detail here, but the just very briefly, the bill in the current year fiscal year of twenty four, twenty five, for a thirty five hundred gallon customer is forty six dollars and thirty five cents per month. If you skip five years ahead to the July fiscal year beginning July one of twenty nine, that would bump up to fifty seven dollars and forty six cents. If you're a five thousand gallon per month household, that's currently fifty eight dollars a month. That would bump up to seventy one dollars and ninety cents for fiscal year twenty nine thirty, reflecting the July one of twenty nine uh adjustment. That that was A, so the steep the steepest. Any other input that you guys want to share?
Okay, any questions from council or comments?
Uh, I just want to say we have really good water. We really do. We have excellent water in this town.
Yeah, I I guess my take on it is we have to start saving for it now. I whether, I think Tracy, you had said A or B, if we don't start setting aside money for for it now, it sounds like we potentially might exceed what we can bond for as well. So I I agree, it will make us unpopular and people don't like paying for things now. But I don't see a a different way out of this.
Goal is to try to keep it gradual per per year or two, instead of a big jolt all at once, so.
Okay, any additional questions or comments?
So we 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 could choose any of these options or any other option also. We could choose a B minus in the middle of those or a C plus or or any any one of these. These are just specific scenarios targeting those specific percentage.
Absolutely, and sure.
Yeah.
Does council wish to have a couple of weeks to consider this? Um, or are you prepared to give some general direction this evening?
I don't think anybody wants to talk if because we're, uh, we all know what's coming down the pipe. Dave, I I don't know, uh, what's your, I mean, you, we hired you to make some of these decisions.
I think um the wastewater, I I mean A is my preference. I mean, you're you're talking about three hundred thousand dollars difference if you go with B. I mean, I think we 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 can live with that. It just means that we're gonna bond for more on that project. Uh, water. I don't know, I'm thinking probably middle of the road, Jake. I mean, based on what you're seeing, I mean, we've talked a little bit about like the like like the electrical costs have gone up considerably with the new plant, but um I think scenario B would probably, at least what I have looked at, I don't know what your thoughts are. You haven't said a lot tonight. Well, I think B for B for water is probably a safe bet, but I'm I I would encourage you to look at either A or B for wastewater, just knowing that there there's gonna be a big bill coming up here in the future.
So are we looking like between water and wastewater, five years down the road? Are we looking like a a twenty five dollars more for both? That that's, is that kind of what you're looking at? I mean, I'm gonna hold you to that, but.
If I look at it from my own standpoint, five years down the road, about twenty six dollars increase over base year this year.
Yeah. I mean, really, I mean, five years down the road and. It should be expected.
Two-person home, we would be looking at roughly twenty six dollars after five years. So an annual increase of a hundred and fifty or three hundred and twelve dollars in both water and sewer, if you went with A on both. So worst case scenario, it's gonna increase it on a two-person home about three hundred dollars after five years where we are today on an annual cost. Does that help you?
And I know I'm not popular for saying this, but I've said in every community that I've worked for, you know, when you look at the thousand gallons of water going up, you know, maybe it's a thirty cent increase on that per thousand. I remind people, where else can you get a thousand gallons of anything for a thirty cent increase? And I see the people that, you know, I've had people come in and complain that are walking in with the four dollar, five dollar bottles of water they picked up at the convenience store. They paid just as much for that water as they could a thousand gallons. So I mean, I think everything is kind of relevant in what you're getting. If you if you look at the amount that you're receiving for the dollars that you're paying, I still think there were a a bargain going forward. And I've paid considerably higher costs than these in my last two previous communities.
Well, I I don't think we have a choice. I mean, because if you're looking at our growth and what we're gonna be looking at and five years down the road. Yeah.
Well, I I know when AJ hit me up about a year ago, he said, you know, we gotta be looking at this sewer just becau- just based on what the growth at at one twenty. And if you look at what's happened since then, now with potentially Huxley Heights and the addition here, we've got some commercial projects that are taken off. I mean, there's there's quite a bit of stuff that's gonna happen, so. I mean.
Well, I guess I I I think we need to do something. I think there's that, but we also know in, this is just to get us close to ready when we bond, and then we're probably gonna have to fund that bond. It's gonna have to go again in five years, four years or some number. It's it's gonna go go again. Um. Yeah, I I I hate take money just to put it in our bank here, but I also know we should be prepared and ready to offset some of that bond stuff too. I like paying for some of this stuff in cash, but I don't think we can pay for a a whole new sewer system and and wastewater treatment plant in cash. Uh, I I hate going with A just because it's it's nine percent on something and it seems like a big jump every year. But for ten dollars, you know, possibly that's that's not that big a jump.
Barb, these additional funds that will be generated will be earmarked for these future projects. They'll be put in a fund um accordingly.
Yes, that is correct. We already have a water reserve fund um that was a requirement for uh for the the bonds we took out for for the water print. Uh, we will also uh have a sewer reserve fund. Um, we're very close to closing out the year. I said to AJ, we kind of look and see what we might need for operating funds next year and start putting some money into that.
Yeah, so that fund, yeah, can't be used for a new truck or pick a thing.
That's correct. There's a sewer equipment fund for the new truck.
Um, so is it set up such that a a X percent of every individual's bill goes into that fund then, or how does that?
We could certainly set it up that way. I mean, there there is nothing nothing concrete set right now, but but we could certainly set something up so so much percentage of the bill goes into that fund. Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll do some heavy investing of those funds.
I I guess I would favor a model with some type of uh percentage uh as opposed to just a annual allocation. For that, me personally, I mean, if we're setting these rates with the intention of X percent is gonna go towards this, then um, if you've got the mechanics to make that happen, that would be my preference.
Chip, I'm assuming you could help us figure that out based on rate increase and what we've got number wise.
I could, you bet. There there are some assumptions I've made here and what the setup site would be, but it's yeah, all assumptions. You bet.
Both of these funds are what they would call enterprise funds in the governmental aspect, which basically means that they're designed to pay for themselves. So water and sewer should be designed to be paid for out of user fees. And that money should be remain in them funds and not be used for anything else technically.
Okay, so uh I'm gonna go with the assumption that council wishes to have some additional time to consider this. Um, do you want a work session in two weeks or do you want this as a? I guess we'll need a work session, right, to give you some direction, or do you want it as a agenda item?
We can do it either way. We could um set it up as just a discussion item in the regular session, or we could treat it as a work session. Either way, we can. I mean, it would take another meeting for us to actually bring it back for approval. So.
Okay, let's just make it a work session in two weeks then.
I'm leaning towards just going full board, closing my eyes and getting beat up.
I actually am also leaning towards A on both of them. When you look at the cost difference over. The next couple of years, that's why I was verifying kind of what our average usage is. So. Okay.
Appreciate your assistance.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You do have a few other fees here to look at um that I think Barbara's worked with staff to put together. A lot of our different fees and some of our folks are here to talk about those as well. If you have any questions.
We didn't do much with the with the park and rec fees um. Because they just increased their fees. It was in, I believe it was January that they increased their fees. That was at the request of SafeBuild. Those those billing permits, the increases, those increases. Uh, for the permits, like I said, we're at the request of SafeBuild. The other items below that, we worked with Amy and Jake to determine what needed to be done. You know, the Jake, do you want to speak to the cost of the of the water meters?
So on the cost of meters, those it's crazy how much they've increased over the last couple of years. Um, and I just think that we got to put something in there that's market price. That way we can keep up with it because. Um, when we're having things going that are forty five units, forty five meters, if we're taking. Fifty or hundred dollar hit on a meter, that's that'll add up pretty fast. So just kind of market value and keep keep up with that every. Six months or something and and make sure we're not taking a big hit on those. That's the big one for me. So.
Thank you. Um, on the trade permits, Barb, that increase. Is that all going to SafeBuild or is that, I I assume?
No, I believe that we we get, I want to say we get twenty five dollars out of that hundred dollars. We get twenty five dollars from each of those permits. Yeah, yeah.
Um, as long as we're looking at those rates, um, I'd like to see us look at a model. For. Uh, so we've got electrical plumbing mechanical permits. So if I'm building a brand new house. That electrical permit is a hundred dollars. If I add a single circuit in my house, that permit is also a hundred dollars. That doesn't seem to be quite equitable. Um, same thing with plumbing. If I add a new spigot on the back of my house, that's a hundred dollars. If I plum a whole new house, it's a hundred dollars. Um, if we could look at a model for other than new construction. Now would be the time, right? Because we're talking about them. I'll move along and ask the next question. The park fees. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, maybe I'll look over here. Park fees, park and rec fees. When's the last time we increased those? And it appears that there's no proposed increase.
No, there's I I want to say they the generation's fitness. Rates went up, I believe it was January. And I think that's when uh the park board revisited. All of their fees. That's why there are no proposed increases there.
Yeah, I was thinking, I know Heather's not here. I'm not certain it was within the year because she told me to renew my thing and I didn't do it in time and. It's a little bit more expensive, but marginally, so.
If there's no B in the proposed and there isn't B in the old, is that it goes away?
No, if there's no, it it stays the same if there's no fee in the proposed. It will it will stay at the old.
Something like that deposit says it's a thousand and the proposed is a thousand, so it's.
That one was carried over.
Yeah.
It when uh. The generations fitness memberships went up, uh, did we also look at the? Park rental, I guess I'll call them park rentals, but the. Uh, railroad park shelter, Burhow Park Shelter. Um, North Kalson Community Center, did those, when's the last time we've increased those? Those seem very reasonable.
Reasonable. Um, I'd have to double check with Heather. Like I said, I know that the generations. Fitness fees went up, but I don't know if the park board requested to raise those shelter fees as well.
Yeah, I guess if we could take a look at that, certainly our our costs have increased. Substantially over the last five years. So uh, if we could take a look at that, please. Okay, any additional comments from council regarding fees? Or? Changes you might want to see? Okay, hearing none. That concludes that particular item. Moving on, our last item this evening is seven D. Discussion on the water treatment plant, Forrest.
Uh, Forrest Alters, you've been string Kim. So we had this in our work session uh last month and. At that meeting, Councilman Mulder asked some questions about equipment and whether. There were delays in some of the equipment being um. Provided for the project. So I told council I'd look into that some more, and so I've done that. Uh, the information that's in your council packets, I added into or added that information into that. So there's a lot to read, but. Basically, there was uh electrical motor control center that. Um, when we had the preconstruction meeting. That was intended to be delivered in June of twenty twenty two. So again, this project started uh with the notice proceed and. Uh, and the end of twenty twenty one. And so at the preconstruction meeting, that equipment will be delivered at the June of twenty two. It actually ended up not being delivered until December of twenty three, so eighteen months later. And so I included in your packet a couple of letters from Woodruff and a. A copy of a letter from Eden, who is a supplier of that equipment. And those are in your packet as well. There are a couple gentlemen from Woodruff Construction also here tonight. Uh, that can provide some information for you. The other question that Councilman Mulder asked was, well, was the. Equipment ordered on time? I mean, you know, it's one thing for us to be eighteen months late. It's another was, well, was it? Eighteen months late in getting ordered. Uh, so I provided some information on that. Again, the anticipated delivery date was June of twenty twenty two. Uh, we didn't receive shop drawings until April of twenty two. Uh, we went back and forth over a couple of months on reviewing those shop drawings. Uh, there were some things that need to be corrected and. Uh, some things that need to be added to it. So they went back and forth for a couple of months. So we didn't actually turn the shop drawings until June of. Twenty two, about the same time it was scheduled to be delivered. So. There was, um, you know, we lost about seven months in that. Uh, that timeframe. Now, when I talk to Woodruff about that or talk to Eden about that. Their comment is, well, there the delays that we had, the eighteen months in getting it here. There was also delays in getting those shop drawings prepared between. When that they were told to do that at the end of twenty one until we actually see them in April. So that's. That was their response uh on that question on whether it was ordered early or not. Um, so that's kind of the additional information. The rest of the information is is in there is. Similar to what we had I presented before. What I'm looking for is a direction from council is if you. Are interested in assessing liquidated damages or not and to what amount. And uh what we're ultimately going to is presenting a uh. Final pay estimate to the council, and then we would incorporate that amount into the. Uh, pay estimate for council consideration at a future council meeting.
If you could help me out with just a couple timelines here, Forrest.
I've asked. It's been it's been a long project.
Uh, what was the original planned duration up to substantial completion? Was this a two year job, a four year job?
Yeah, so the original. Uh, the notice proceed was issued in November of twenty twenty one. And. We were to be substantially complete by August one of twenty three. Make that's me making water. And final completion of January of twenty four. So. Uh, substantial completion was in June of twenty three as compared to. Uh, I'm sorry, June of twenty four as opposed to August of twenty three. So that's. Uh, how many months later is that? Nine nine months, I guess, something like that. And then uh, you know, final completion, we're just wrapping up now. So that's. Uh, about a year and a half late.
Okay, um, the motor control center took uh. Approximately seventeen months or so to get here. Uh, I think you said it was uh released in June of twenty two and received in December of twenty three ish. Maybe eighteen months, something in that range. Um, and maybe that was longer than expected, but what? What's an expected timeframe? These don't come off the shelf. It takes six, eight, ten, twelve months to build them anyway.
Right, in their in their original. Uh, information they provided us at the preconstruction meeting that we had in December, it was to be a delivery in June. So that's. Eight months. Six months, seven months, something like that.
Okay, so it was maybe additional. Yeah, I'm using rough numbers. There may be an additional ten months of delays to the MCC over what was proposed.
Uh, yeah, well, it ended up being eight eighteen. I mean, it was going to be um.
It yeah, it took eighteen, but it was always going to take at least seven or eight.
Well, no, it was eighteen on. Um, no, it was eighteen months beyond the anticipated delivery date. It was anticipated in June of. Uh, twenty two and actual delivery was December of twenty three. So it ended up being. Uh, ended up being almost two years. Two years and plus a little.
At at what point did you know that it was going, the delivery was going to take that long?
So uh, it kept, we kept having, we have monthly progress meetings on this project. It seems like every progress meeting, the date kept getting pushed further and further and further out. Um. You know, May, I put it in your packets, the May tenth of twenty three. Uh, they had talked, uh, Woodruff had presented that. Uh, talking about the delay and they asked for an extension to May one of twenty four. And then it kept on being delayed uh again. So they came back in March of twenty four and. Now it's uh. Uh, delayed even, maybe I'm missing my, yeah, um. Delayed to October of twenty three in the May letter and. Uh, ended up being the December of twenty three in the March letter. So. There wasn't ever a time where they were eaten, said it's going to be eighteen months later. It was, well. Few months more later, a few months more later, and just kind of kept on going.
So Forrest, in your um letter here, you talk about assuming and after the. Submissions and resubmits and and for the shop drawings, uh, third paragraph after that, you talk about a final actual completion date. It's July and LDs would be assessed for days past a um final completion date. This amount would be ninety six thousand. Up earlier in the letter, you had contractual, operational, actual kind of cost breakdowns. Uh, are you recommending or or suggesting?
I'm not, I'm not recommending. I'm just, I'm just presenting the information.
I understand. Okay, so I'm. Presenting.
Typically.
Would I was just wondering how that compared to the contractual, operational or actual up above.
Right, yeah, yeah. Typically, liquidated damages are based off of substantial completion, meaning when are we making water, not. Final completion of. You know, you know, everything's done, done. Uh, so that's that's typically where we look at is look at that substantial completion number, not the final completion number.
So that ninety six is.
That's based on a final completion number.
That's based on the file. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to. Okay.
I'm saying that's an option, but it's not typical.
Yep, okay.
So we were making water by the due date, right?
No.
Not, we're not how far off.
So the date to be making water was. Just a minute, uh, August one, yeah, August one of twenty three and.
There are six of twenty four.
Yeah.
So there's, my feeling on this, there's no way I want to pay the engineering fee. Uh, I don't think that's our responsibility. Um, uh, we can argue on the. The date of when it was running and what the cost is and so forth. And. Um, I guess I'm looking at staff and Dave to let us know, do you feel there's any damages on our part from that? If not, I, like I said, I. I don't want the taxpayers, I don't want to pay for something. Pay you guys for something that. We didn't get until way past our deadline.
Just to be fair, they weren't the project managers, though. They were, they were the city's representative.
But we're paying that, right?
We haven't paid that forty nine, have we?
No. Yeah, but that's what it's it's costing us.
They so far, they're holding the forty nine themselves and nobody's paid them. So the city at this point is not out.
Yeah.
That's correct. And the ask.
They pay more than the five thousand of additional costs underestimated here, if I'm reading this right.
Correct. And the ask, uh, or that's not an ask. Thanks for clarifying that. The opportunity is. These additional costs could be assessed to the against the contract. Um, currently, we're withholding uh retainage, hundreds of thousands of dollars in retainage. Um, which is why we're here, I guess. Um, certainly I can appreciate. Delays in in the the equipment, those kind of things. It's not like the project stopped for eighteen months, though, waiting for the MCC. The building wasn't built around it. Um. There had to have been other delays or.
I mean, there was other work. There were times where there was not much, you know, a lot of, not a lot of work going on because, you know, they were waiting for. For other stuff, but this was the primary driver of that. Of of the delay.
Um, and my last question, when do you anticipate final acceptance, final completion?
Um. Maybe sometime in July. I mean, I I was thinking one of your July council meetings.
Where's Woodruff going to land on this?
What's up? To me, please, absolutely. Big introduction, please. Grant Reimers, Woodruff Construction. I'm our central region president. Um, so as you kind of mentioned, you alluded to paying for that. We, as Woodruff. When we get these delays too, there's nothing we can do about it. Eden, Square D, Alan Bradley, all those guys. Their contracts that electricians, right? You don't change their scope. If there's delays, they just write it in there. It's kind of your responsibility. So us as the local guy are kind of taking the hit. Woodruff actually had significant costs in these delays too, because we. Woodruff actually had significant costs in these delays too, because we, like you alluded to, there was times where we were slower, we were still manning the job. But definitely not as full force as we would have liked to.
Um yeah, as far as the timeline goes, I know there was a question early on about whether these were ordered right away. Uh Forrest alluded to the fact that the shop drawings took longer. Uh timeline for us would be P O was issued from us to our electricians. On ten twenty twenty-one, which is before the notice to proceed was issued to us, uh just trying to get ahead, be diligent, get things on the way. And then the P O for the MCCs from our electrician was issued on eleven eighteen twenty-one. So right after the notice to proceed was issued from council. Um with the delays that we saw in COVID, there were engineering shutdowns from these manufacturers. Uh which resulted in longer lead times, things that we could previously get in eight weeks for. Uh shop drawings on ended up ballooning into months at a time. And then post shop drying, review and approval, again, just continued balloons and. It'll be another month, it'll be another month, it'll be another month. Uh as far as. Being able to progress with work on site, we were able to do as much as we could. There were slowdowns while we knew we were waiting for equipment. Uh but there was always gonna be a point where we were dead in the water waiting on these. We had equipment set, ready to go, ready to turn on. And then after the MCCs arrived, there was actually a second phase to this project, which involved us tearing apart some of the existing plant. Uh obviously, we can't tear into the existing plant until the new plant's fully operational, just to continue to provide water to the city.
Like you said, we we did experience cost during that, and this was during COVID, so I know our pipe supplier went up ninety-six thousand, kind of unrelated, but. During this time, there were still costs, and I want to point out that on the project, I think we were less than a quarter of a percent. Of change orders, which is Forrest had said, normal would be three to five percent. So we were working diligently. I know I stood in council when this got awarded and kind of said. Bring to our best, we know the city, it's already over budget. Um we want to work with you guys, we've had a good relationship, um. I guess a year ago, just tell a little story a year ago, uh Saturday before Fourth of July, we had a pump go down and. We came out there, Zach and I were out there at ten o'clock at night and got it running by, what, eight o'clock the next morning?
Around ten.
Around ten, so, I don't know, we've made a good effort, um. Obviously. We don't have extra money for that, but ultimately it's your guys' decision, um. That's kind of where Brad, I guess.
Um obviously, you're intimately involved with this project. When do you anticipate? Final completion, final acceptance, hundred percent, everything's working.
Yeah, so currently, there's a couple items that we would consider warranty that are being taken care of right now. There's been some issues with the pumps that were supplied. The manufacturer is taking care of those. Uh they're supposed to be on site tomorrow to get one back in service, and then another one will be. A little bit later on, we're still waiting confirmation from them. Again, we would consider that warranty work, nothing worthy of holding up final completion. There are two items left in uh V N K's court right now that require some answers to the city on. And then we're waiting some guidance from uh what V N K provides an answer on.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh comments, questions from council?
I just, we're just being, how do I ask this? Are we just being punitive because it took longer? Which we've not done in the past?
Uh no, we're not, we're not fining them a thousand dollars a day for being late. The question on the table is, there is. Costs incurred. Um. Uh some by city staff, the most by V N K. Do we want to be made whole for any of that?
That's the ninety-six?
That's. Uh forty-nine and the five.
Which are being kicked, okay.
The the city's part is minimal, correct?
I'd buy, yeah, I'd be comfortable with a forty-nine, six, whatever the the V N K costs.
That's so keeping that from the retainage is what you're saying, but then that's short to you guys forty-nine?
Correct, and like you said, we didn't, we didn't incur costs too, we didn't ask for a thing.
Yep.
We do have, as the last change order, we do have a credit of twenty-four thousand coming back to the city.
Yep.
Again, trying to work with the city and get some of those costs down, the whole time we were cognizant of that.
And then uh there were additional costs that we took on throughout the project, just knowing that we were going to have this conversation at some point. Uh we had sent in the letters of delay, uh hadn't heard anything back on those, so we figured we would be here at some point talking to you guys about it. With that in mind, uh we did a lot of things that we consider as extras that weren't necessarily included in the contract documents. Uh outside of the material escalations, the warranty extensions we paid for and the additional general conditions from the delay, which. Are non-billable items, those are items that are excusable for additional time, but not additional costs. The items that were uh could have resulted in additional costs come into about seventy-two thousand for us.
Yeah, I I just think a lot of this, the world was turned upside down in twenty twenty with with the COVID and and everything else, right? And and material cost escalations were through the roof. You guys hadn't planned on that when you bid this project and and. Move this thing forward. Nobody knew what it was going to look like. That's that's really hard, so I I I felt heartfelt about the. Cost escalations and the time delays, because I saw it in in my world too, so that's why I was trying to get like. If you had time delays, that that's understandable to me, right? I am, um. Cost escalations are part of it also, that we've we've seen thirty percent cost escalations and higher on on a lot of the things, so. That's why I was trying to get it as low as possible for for L Ds. I didn't want to go to that highest number because I. You guys assumed a lot of costs as well, I I assumed, um because you weren't able to renegotiate those costs after bid. Um so I was trying to get it as low as possible. I I kind of understand the. Engineering costs we're paying extra of being string Kim is maybe a a maybe a bottom line baseline, but. Maybe it could be offset by that twenty-six thousand dollar credit or something like that. I I don't know. What, that's just one opinion and and I'm trying to help. Because you experienced a lot of un- unknown costs and delays too. But also trying to look out for our taxpayers and what was done. I don't think you intentionally made this project last a year longer. You had other things to do too. So.
Correct, you'd make more money the faster.
Right, 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 yeah.
Uh just to clarify, the change order, you think is a credit of twenty, was it twenty-four, twenty-six ballpark?
Uh the change order credit as we stand right now is twenty-four thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars ninety-one cents, which. Uh would bring this project to a net total change orders of twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Or point two percent of the original contract amount.
I guess for us, that's kind of the injury to insult, though, because throughout this, there's been things that we've paid for, because we knew we were gonna have this conversation. So, I mean, it's, yeah, that's for us, that's. Trying to facilitate things.
I'm just throwing out a number to get conversation started, right, so.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'll I'll pick that up. You've you've mentioned, uh, you know, maybe we settle it, um. The credit's twenty-four five, um and then a damages of twenty-five thousand. Uh the city would effectively give all of that to being uh V N K, that would make them whole. Is that what you're proposing? Something in that ballpark?
Something good.
How much do we have in retainage? So we have enough, we have enough to pay the bills.
Yes.
Let's pay the bill.
I could be talked into zero too, but I just needed to start a conversation. I don't feel like the the highest one under the. Big sum of contractual number that's in here is probably appropriate with all the delays and everything else and and it costs escalation set. Got that for us all.
I I'm good with consensus of whatever we decide, I'm I'm getting easy.
And and it's almost unheard of to have that little cost overrun. On uh per especially percentage wise on a project this large and this long duration, that's. Right? I can see tearing the credits with them. So effectively, it'd be twenty-five thousand dollar charge, uh it's literally. You know, not major forty-nine thousand dollars. Yeah, I just hate to add to the taxpayers. Aspect of the thing, so. What I'd like to work with people once we can.
What am I missing? We have, we're trying to short, we're trying to not pay them twenty-five grand then?
Effectively, yes, we would sort of sort of them twenty-five, but yeah, that's a fair concept.
Because of delays that were beyond their control.
Four thousand, point five thousand, I'd say it, let's tear that up and let's just be.
Just pay the bill.
Just tear that 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 credit of twenty-five up and and we're done. We'll we'll eat half of that. Cost of the engineering and and that credit will be, okay? We we would. Yeah, I want to find a balance.
I think what you're saying is that if you apply the twenty-four thousand and twenty-five would be left to be paid essentially.
That that was gonna be my suggestion is, I I had wrote down, yeah, it was twenty-four five, I think you said was the change order credit. If that went to engineering cost and then we paid the difference to get up to forty-nine. That's, I guess that's the compromise, I believe, if I'm hearing right, between what you're requesting and.
The change order would be due back to us regardless if we had anything else. So in other words, we're sending, we're taking our money that's due back to us, plus an adding more of our money and paying a hundred percent of the bill. I don't mind using the credit as part of our money to pay the bill, but then I don't know that. I really want to pay a hundred percent of the bill on top of it.
I misunderstood, I thought you were saying.
You did the work.
I would say. That twenty-five that's left, if we want to split the difference with them, if we want to look at doing something, but I don't know that. It's our responsibility for a hundred percent. That that's where I think if we. If we only assess them, the lower determines twenty-five thousand, the change order is still in country, that's gonna be a credit. The charge is on twenty-five thousand, I think that is.
I'm good with that.
The way that you summed it up, I believe, is what I thought John was saying to start with, which was assessing them twenty-five. They have a change order credit for twenty-four or five.
That's still gonna get processed.
Towards the city.
Yeah.
And it's close to a net zero, it's not an exact net zero, but yeah.
So they get paid for their services?
Less one five. Can you live with that?
I mean, to us, it feels like we put a lot into this project. We, like I said, we made those trips. It was a struggle on some things, things were hard to get, so I guess this seemed like insult to injury to me, um but I understand, you guys have. I I get it.
One, one thing we haven't done. Uh staff, staff, Jeff, you guys. All right, so. I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure what these are for, we're involved in conversations, so.
See, and I would just like, pay the bill, I was serious, like, pay them their money. We have the money, we set the money aside. I think I think we get a reputation for doing business poorly by not paying the bill.
Well, I don't think anybody's arguing about paying the bill. The fact of the matter is, is we have a contract. Within the contract, there are legal obligations as part of a contract. And we're here talking about the legal obligations of the contract. If you go back and look what it is by the legal obligations of the contract, we could be sitting here talking about three hundred and some thousand dollars worth of. Assessments that we could technically assess based on that. None of us here are asking for three hundred and some thousand. We have forty-nine thousand of actual overrun that happened with engineering. We're, we're not even talking the five thousand additional costs with actually, we're just looking at trying to make the engineering, make Forrest company whole. For their expenses that they incurred in this that have not been paid at this point. So to me, it's, it's not that we're not paying the bill, we're agreeing to pay the bill, we're just looking at how we're gonna handle the forty-nine thousand dollar. Cost overrun with engineering and who's ultimately responsible, or can we work out a deal to split the costs on?
I guess my feeling is they didn't have control over the delays, so. I don't want to split the costs.
For the contract, we wrote the two letters to make the owner aware that those were out of our control and there was nothing we were gonna be able to do about it.
And the contract does allow for a time extension based off those letters. Um I just don't know if that was ever evaluated.
Greg, I can see it both ways, I mean, I. I don't think they, I don't think there, I'm not seeing there, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm not seeing there was any intention. Of causing this delay. I don't see that you guys were taking a break for a couple of weeks. You know, and somewhere else or a month or so forth. Um.
So when you're both.
I I'm, I I I'm going back and forth, but I I'm leaning with Tracy. Let's let's just pay it.
We had zero L Ds and move on.
Right, right, let's just.
I can live with that.
I don't, yeah, Greg or John can.
No, that's perfect, so I'd be up there actually three of you and Mr. Mercury. My final thought is, I don't think the city should, I don't think taxpayers should eat the bill for something that we have contractual obligations on.
Yeah, that's that's where I thought the twenty-five thousand dollar compromise was was reasonable. I mean. The business I work for, also at supplier issues, I I recognize that COVID was this crazy outlier. I actually think that that twenty-five thousand was a, a very fair compromise for the difference there. Um considering what Forrest brought to us last time, the the potential difference there, so.
This is total contract bond, yeah.
It's ten, credit ten million?
The original contract was ten million nine hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred and eighty.
We had twenty-two thousand dollars, yeah.
Net and change orders after the credit? That means on the.
I'm just saying, we're not digging into funds, we had the money set aside, the money's there, we're not out any additional more money than what we already paid. That's why.
Okay, well, we'd be out of additional like forty-nine thousand, we're getting the credit back, the credit back would be coming back regardless of what happens, so we're out. Just shy of fifty thousand if we take the whole burden on ourselves, so it's not like we're not out any. That's it. I mean, if you think fifty thousand's not anything, I'd like to talk to you.
Okay, well, uh at this point, I appear to have consensus from three council members. Um to not assess liquidated damages. Um so at this point, I would propose to have. Uh staff prepare our resolution accordingly, I'm sorry, pending some direction from Forrest here.
Yeah, so our next step would be, um they have asked for a reduction in the retainage, which are legally uh obligated to have. So even if we are not um completely done, done, at your next council meeting, we will have a pay estimate in front of you. To uh pay almost all of the retainage that will come at your next council meeting. Uh I wanted to get some feedback on this before we move forward with that, so that will be the next step. And and then uh we'll we'll see where we're at with all these other things, uh maybe there'll be a final acceptance at the. The first meeting in July, but I would think by the second one for sure.
Will we see your bill at that same, this next meeting as well?
So I I think, Dave, you had talked about maybe taking that to a work session, is. Okay, all right.
You you must have done a really good set of plans if the overruns were that miniscule on eleven million dollars. And so thanks to you for doing a a great set of plans and thanks for Woodruff for delivering it according to those plans without. Lot of major cost escalation, so appreciate.
Yeah. Yes, and that was, that's Woodruff's credit and staff's credit. Yes, and that was, that's Woodruff's credit and staff's credit, I mean, they were out there, you know, scrambling during that time, so. Um, so I appreciate the com- comments, uh, Councilman Mulder, uh, but we had a good contractor too.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, thank you very much, counsel.
I, it's been a long meeting, I certainly appreciate everybody's, uh, participation, I'm looking for a motion adjourn, I've got that from Ms. Roberts. A second from Mr. Etter, all those in favor, please just sign with a high.
High.
All those pose, same sign, thank you very much, our next meeting is July eighth. Thank you.